So let's call this meeting to order. And I'm guessing Keith, they didn't get any minutes put together?
Uh, nothing yet.
Alright, we'll put that on the next one and get the minutes approved. Okay, what do I have? Turned out the wrong one. There we go. I guess the first thing we want to do is Amanda, welcome. I hear you've been...
Well, they swore at you, huh?
They did!
Oh my gosh!
Bells and whistles on.
Were you at that select board meeting?
On Monday?
Yeah.
Sure was.
Did you get ratified or did you get approved?
Approved.
Yeah, we gotta fix that. I've read enough that that's gonna stop one way or another.
What do you mean?
Planning Board controls its subcommittees.
Does that align with the bylaws?
Bylaw has nothing to do with the planning board.
Or law, I don't know.
We're elected. The bylaw doesn't, uh, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll ask to... Oh, we need to ask town council that because I've found other towns in the Commonwealth that their planning board controls their subcommittees.
I mean, I don't want to get involved. What I believe is that the planning board got an email from Tanika that outlines the town's bylaw state with regards to appointments to the bylaw subcommittees.
Appointed committees. This isn't an appointed committee.
Right, so I'm not getting in that.
No, no, that's why...
I'm not getting in that, I just...
I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing according to what's on paper, what's written on paper.
I have no reason to question whether she's been appointed correctly or not, so...
Oh, I don't care, she's on. I mean, we already said she was appointed. If the select board wants to do it, that's their prerogative. I just want to get for future people who want to come on, I want to go through this hullabaloo. Um, if the planning board gets the resume, um, myself and vice will look at it and basically say thumbs up and make it happen. But again...
I mean, I'm fine with that for my purposes, but do we need any type of checks and balances?
Yeah, what are we giving up here? Like, what's the...
We're giving up the select board in our business is what we're giving up. And I'm not cool with that.
That's why we're elected.
Yep, that's why we're elected.
Yeah, we don't work for them theoretically.
Yep.
I just want to understand the chain of command.
They could tell us.
That's all, because I'm new. Yeah.
Don't worry about it, I've got a call into the AG. I'm asking the AG to give us a call on this.
It never really happened in a bad way.
You went, you did the right thing, I'm glad it went the right way.
Yes.
And it's all taken care of, but for future, the board has never done this before. This is the first time, so you're the first one.
Sure.
So...
I'll be the last.
I have no problem with that, I just want to make sure that the correct procedure's being followed.
You know, Mr. Gibson, I don't know if his name is Dave. Remember the gentleman that left kind of right as I started? He was a clerk, you know, he lived over by...
Oh yeah.
You know, was he appointed in this?
Pointed by the planning board, yeah.
So, that's what I was gonna say, is did it happen that way with him?
Marilyn and Bonnie was, and then Marilyn ran for the planning board and got elected, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move on, just past that. I just want to welcome and thanks for being here.
Welcome, thank you.
And, uh, um, I'll... Minutes, of course, we'll put those on the next one since we don't have any, so we'll pass by that. Um, I want to, before we get into item one, uh, item two, I checked with Anita and it's not back yet. The AG hasn't sent it back and will be back until after September 1st, so... She said she had nothing, she was gonna share nothing.
Look, I looked at it today.
Then why did she send me, she left me a voicemail saying nothing official will be back in her hands until after September 1st?
Well, apparently they, like, they have it on apparently finished.
Okay.
They must have given some sort of interim report or something like that. Again, and...
I'll be more specific in my voicemail next time.
I'll take it, I'll forward it to you now.
Please, please.
And keep it from Anita.
So what I'm gonna ask is, uh, for new business item two to be put on next, the next meeting so we can handle it and get it moving forward. So I really want to get that on the November meeting.
I mean, I just want to confirm that we, that, um, I don't know when Anita would have left you that voicemail, I mean, how far back was it, do you remember?
Oh, for me, she left the voicemail.
I mean, did you get a voicemail? Are you talking about the one that she copied me in a couple weeks ago?
I don't know.
Okay, so she did, she did copy both of us on, I mean, it's possible that she did.
Yeah.
Um, but we, I spoke with Anita recently about this because it was a pressing matter and she told me that she's expecting basically the same thing September 1st. So that's, which is basically 11 days.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it. We'll catch it on the next meeting. I just want to get it, if it's just text and cleanup, let's get it cleaned up, let's get it through the bylaw subcommittee, get it to the planning board, and get it ready for the warrant.
Right, and we'll know in 11 days, so...
Yep, good enough. So I didn't get excited about it when she left me the voicemail, I'm like...
Yep.
Preaching to 20.
Couple more days.
How does that work technically? Do they issue every town hall on the same date or is it just like...
They probably gotta assign the people is my guess.
Yeah.
And, you know...
And they work through the paperwork.
They get 90 days and Anita's voicemail said they take 90 days. That's what she left me.
And I applied for a couple of extensions and things at all.
So I'm fine with that. The third one, open space bylaw, um, I've been trying to get in touch with John and he's quite busy, so I haven't heard back from him, I'm gonna keep up, I'm a pain in the butt. So I will get in touch with him one way and find out where he's at with that. When I get it, Carbono, our previous planner, he was working on the open space updates for us, just some cleanup. And unfortunately he left before he finished it and he said he would give me a copy of what he's got done and some recommendations. I wanted to get that to you, take a look at, and then bring it before the committee. And if it's just cleanup, let's get that cleaned up and get it on the November, uh, warrant too, to have two bylaws cleaned up and updated. Those are my two and three, so we're left with one. I will open it up to if anybody's got comments on the three different documents.
Three different?
Um, one was Paxton.
Yep.
Concord, which was one page, and then Worcester.
Concord was in power, didn't it?
Yeah.
I don't remember which one it was. I think it was the Worcester one. It was a Concord, isn't it?
My review of this is, I really liked Paxton one. I mean, it was short, sweet, and it covered a lot of what we were looking to do in our site plan review. Could be added more to.
Yes.
Um, Concord was sort of, that's what I'm looking for. Concord and Worcester were sort of aloof, left a lot up to be interpretation. That was mine. It didn't get, there wasn't a lot of meat in it like Paxton's was. Paxton's like literally called out, um, like there are 10 different topics and their submission requirements.
Where, where...
Paxton, it's, um, site plan, review, procedure, submission requirements.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, I think that, so just to, I... This is just a clause that was taken from the, from Concord subdivision rules and regs. It didn't, I did not include the entire site plan review process because I didn't know that you guys wanted to do that as well. Did we want to revise the entire site plan review process or whether you want to create this new requirement where a site plan review is required for certain types of new construction?
You don't have to kind of care for them, you already have a site plan requirement for certain things.
I always look at this...
They're going to overlap or contradict.
Yeah.
And we can, and we'll work with town council just to make sure of that, but I'm just trying to get clear on what is the planning board's intent? Like, what is, what is the goal?
Basically to cover, um, if you want to call it all new construction and buildings.
We have used, yeah.
Um, our site plan was more of, that's what I'm looking for, a way to... Like example, when a business was gone in to make sure that if there was cleanup that needed to be done, you can go in and say, listen, we're not gonna put the site plan and take all this junk and hazardous waste off the back. This was more set up to give, so what I'm looking for, um, requirements for building on-site that's basically been approved. And maybe the site plan comes first and this is part of the, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
So, I think when I heard about this, I think I first heard about it from a guy in Concom who does like pure reviews, uh, planning board stuff. I thought we would at least get some sort of a giant overview with a topographical map that would show us the slopes that we're gonna be dealing with and more dimension to what we're seeing as just, as opposed to just a, here's the overview of what's gonna happen, let the topographical fall where it is and we'll figure it out. And whether that's a whole new plan or whether we tweak something that's already existing, I have no skin in that game as long as we just get it done the best way possible.
Right. Well, they, well, um, the planning board is supposed to receive topographical maps in the definitive plan. Um, I think with the site plan, the purpose of the site plan is to take a more specific view on each individual lot that comes up, uh...
A N R's, yeah.
Right, so...
Which, which we don't get, uh, type of documents.
Correct, and that would be able to show, we could request certain kinds of elevations if you wanted, um, or you could just make it clear that maps with certain slopes require a site plan review as what Paxton does. Um, but it's just a matter of the planning board actually ensuring that they're, they're actually obtaining the documents that's in their subdivision rules and regs. Because the, currently, there are a lot of documents that the planning board requests, at least on paper. Now, have those been received when the applications were submitted? I couldn't tell you. I mean, there are some, there are some documents that I could not find on file. And that proceed, all of this obviously preceded my time, so I can't speak to what happened. All I can say is I don't see them in the file. So, I think we just need to make sure first of all that we're doing our due diligence in terms of ensuring that we're collecting all of the documents, we're not skipping anything at the application phase.
And I think it's important to get it scanned into the computer.
Sure.
Because I've heard that the records in town are an absolute disaster.
That's a lot of towns, it's just not ours.
Well, I only care about this town, I don't care about any other town.
I'm just gonna tell you, we're talking about resources.
So, how much resources would it be to have, well, how many pages would be involved in this? And do we have the proper equipment? Like, what, how was our scanner?
Or you could ask, you can ask the applicant to submit...
Digital files.
Right, digital files, perfect.
Yeah.
Take us out.
If I'm not mistaken, it's in our subdivision, in our regs already for casual submission. There's a cat file.
Recently, I noticed.
I mean, for everything or just the plans?
I don't think we, the plans is what we did.
Well, I mean, we need everything.
Everything's gotta be digital because it all, especially, I mean, this might be a touch point, but with all the talk about, you know, how the board's reputation is in town and things like that and how the board's getting blamed for this, that, and the other. If we open up all the doors and show all the cards, nobody can say that we're doing anything that is other than what we're showing to them and what we're doing. Like, I think that goes along with getting council involved, that goes along with putting everything in emails and everything like that. We can put all our cards on the table and say, there's, you got it all, this is exactly what's going on. And I think that that's the answer to a lot of what's been plaguing us with developers and stuff, is getting a lot of this stuff in writing so that we can, we can hold them to that. I mean, I've heard tales from John, uh, the old planner, John Charbonneau, of hundreds of thousands of dollars that were missed because plans were signed or papers were signed too quick and now clay is gone and in the wind and, you know, the town's on the hook for this and that pump station or what have you. And I think the more that we can get all this stuff in documentation, the more we can stay on top of all of it. Sorry. It's, it's what I was told by the town planner. And I'm simply saying that whether or not that is a fact or not, the fact is that we can streamline a lot of this and cover our own behinds with documentation.
I agree. Yeah, I agree too. And if that means updating the rules and regs to add, like you said, there's something in there saying all documents will be submitted in a digital format. I think we have it in the plans, but I think you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't define any of the other documents that can be submitted.
How do we amend that law?
It's not a law, we can do it, I shouldn't say we, the planning board could do it because it's a, uh, it's a reg.
It's a regulation, we have to hold up a public hearing.
A public hearing, okay.
Yeah, but we don't have to take it to town meeting.
Could we get that on books? That sounds like low hanging fruit.
I'd love the planning board to do that, I'm not gonna get it, that's the planning board's call. This is a subcommittee, I don't know.
Something's gotta bring up at the beginning.
But it's not a bad idea to put it on the agenda.
Do you make a formal recommendation to the planning board?
We can do that, yeah, I'm fine with that. I'd take a motion if you want to do that.
Second, did I do that right?
Yeah.
Let's get a clear motion here.
Yeah, I want to get the motion, what you want to do.
All submitted material. How would you say?
I'd probably put all submitted material for subdivision, um, documentation.
Application.
Application, everything needs to be, you could just say all, all material that is submitted with and for a subdivision, you probably need to have the definitive and, uh, which is pre preliminary, needs to be in digital format.
Also A and Rs.
And...
A and Rs, yeah.
And hard coffee.
You just, I would...
That's what I, you know, and applications forms.
Yeah.
The idea was, you can't proceed until all the documents are there. You could say, hey, you're missing something, we're not bringing it to the agenda because it's not complete. And I feel like John had brought that up because it happens a lot, you know? And, and, once you kind of give it that grace, you know, it's in the book.
And that's a big problem.
You know, so I agree with him.
That severely, that severely puts you all at big risk.
Yeah. John, he got into a little bit of, uh, arguments with a few developers because of his stance of not letting that happen.
Yeah, Julian gave him a hard time once, sort of.
That turned it into a, we're not gonna get into the details, but an internal argument with, with management across the way. Because he put his foot down and said, you will submit? And they said, nope.
Which is, I mean, what was the justification for that? I'm just curious because it doesn't make any sense. I mean, where, where else in what other town would you be allowed to do that?
Have to ask the town administrator and I'll head, because I wasn't, I'm only here saying, I don't want to get into the depth of it.
If I can even remember, it was like, I've never had to do that before, so I don't have to do it.
John's response was, don't care, you're doing it now.
So it was like, there's something, sometimes they're so used to an old way, they, they, and they will, but of course...
I mean, I'm fine changing.
Keep going. Well, and this, this sort of thing, this back and forth between the board and the developers that if somebody could get their hands on it with a records request, shows that the board is doing its part and the developer is giving us hell and high water and it gives credence to when we say, guys, we're, we're on it, we're on it, we're on it, that we're doing what we say, it's, we're running into resistance, these people aren't in interference. It gives credence to what we're, we're trying to say.
I'm fine with that, so what do you have, Keith?
Um, just, I mean, it sounds like, you know, there could be a very specific list of documents. You're using the word material documents for definitive, preliminary, A and R, that they're submitted in full, but the way it sounds like if it's interpreted by the developer would be at the discretion of the town planner. So if someone...
I don't know if I'd go that route.
How would you say?
I wouldn't put all documentations in accordance with the subdivision applications or subdivision, subdivision documentation that's needed for a preliminary and definitive plan we submitted in electronic format.
I have a question, Keith brought up a good point, and I'm the interim town planner, so I don't have any skin in the game here. But why would you not want the town planner, who's a staff member or some other staff member, it doesn't have to be the town planner, whoever is familiar with this document that knows exactly what should be submitted? Why would it not need to explicitly state that a staff member needs to approve that everything is complete before it's deemed complete?
That's typically what will be done in the past, it wouldn't get, it wouldn't get passed.
That's not what I'm hearing, that's not what I'm hearing. That what I'm hearing is that incomplete documents were submitted and that, and that there was friction, there were problems, that's why John got upset.
And then I think John started putting his foot down.
This should not even be up for discussion.
Well, it isn't something we don't have a full, we don't know exactly what it was, but I'm sure he either resolved it, hopefully.
Well, I think we're in the process of trying to do that by requiring, guys, like, this is, not you guys, but like, this is what's happening from now on. Some people will say, oh, you gotta face it and, no, starting now, all this gets submitted every time, no exceptions, and whether it got through in the past...
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's, that's almost felt, felt at this point.
If the town clerk stamps an application with just the person's name on it and nothing else, so that's all the planning board has to review?
No, and I think we wouldn't stamp anything until John had felt it was...
Or if they submitted an application with the wrong class, that's, that's what you have to work with.
Well, that's, and, and, correct me anybody if I'm wrong, my understanding was all the documentation for A and R and a plan would come to the planner's office, they would review it, and then if there was any incompleteness, it wouldn't come to the planning board, it would be...
I spoke with Anita about this and she told me that this has been a problem, it's been a, so there technically is no procedure. So this is also something that needs to be established and the planning board needs to be, needs to also, this, this needs to be something that you guys are firm on, no equivocating or, because it needs to have, have support from the planning board to take effect, right? Um, that we need to come up with a procedure so that complete applications are received by, by you all and you have all the information that you need to make decisions.
John instituted that, exactly like he did.
Okay, alright.
Okay, and, and there was no backing off on it once he, once he did.
He also came up with a timeline for that because in the past, and again, I'm going back a few years, some of the developers, and I'm not any, would come in with an A and R the day of the planning board and say, hey, I want to get this reviewed. And we said enough of that, and so John implemented a timetable, and I don't know where that document is. I'm guessing it's...
The Thursday before.
I'm guessing it's somewhere in the files in his computer that would indicate the timeframe that would come in.
Well, let me give you an example. We got road acceptance request for Lindsey Lane that was stamped by the town, but it's incomplete, as per the road acceptance policy. That happened just a couple, in June or, or, uh, May, recently happened. So I'm telling you that it's, it's happening. The application, the, the request for acceptance was incomplete.
Yeah, and that's why, if you remember, John, once again, he...
Wouldn't have pre-conferences before.
Formed a specific document.
Yep.
That outlines step one, step two, step three, step four.
Yep.
Uh, everything, uh, required for applying for road acceptance. And to be perfectly honest with you, and I somehow rather think I brought it up to, I think I brought it up to the planning board.
The full policy.
Yeah.
That I took a look at what was required in that thing and to be perfectly honest with you, I can't even understand what half of those things are. I believe, I asked you people to look at...
You wrote acceptance, you did.
Yes.
How far back, month or two?
Yeah, yeah.
I do remember going through that, that, that policy. If I remember right, this is before the election, we approved that.
My, oh yeah, we approved, my question probably comes back to, where some of those documents probably submitted originally on the application. They were talking about the deed. Well, that's in the requirements for the application. Do you need to submit it again? Does that make any sense?
I don't know.
I mean, if the road is obviously being built a long time ago in subdivision plans, but then it comes up years later and it has a road acceptance, you're saying, do you keep the old plans or do you have to have them submitted?
I think we need to back up and get to, I like, I like what you're saying. You need to get a policy and if it's, if it's what John put together for timelines and requirements,
If you put it on his town planner page?
Yep, it is, it is accepted, it's been adopted. Um, and I was looking to see if there was something in here about completeness of...
Of documents.
Right. I thought I saw a provision in here, but...
I'm not saying what, what he wrote was not correct.
Right.
All I'm saying is that...
There were sections.
There were sections there that I, I had absolutely no idea what they would be for.
Well, I mean, title certification, copies of deeds, like, those are as bill plans, like, I mean, those are probably more legal documents that maybe, you know, you may not necessarily, may not necessarily be needed for the planning board, but I think just to...
I believe that's what the select board needs it for the right way of the road.
Right, and just for legal...
And that should be filed with the DPW director when the road's accepted, so everything will be, quote, if anybody ever came to lawsuit. Because he take, I shouldn't say he, the director of the DPW takes over the road, so he would, he should be the, so what I'm looking for, holder of the documents.
That's correct, yeah.
Once the road's accepted by the town. I, I think what we're saying here is we might have all of the procedures and documents, but we just don't have it in a policy, in a, a document.
Well, we, so where the gap happens at submission, so we don't have, we need to make it very clear that there needs to be, or outline a process.
That's what it calls, yeah.
For example, if, if you're submitting an application, this goes for any application, site plan, whatever, who does, who is the first person that the applicant speaks to?
That would be you.
Well, honestly, I, that has not been happening. People have gone to get their staff, their, uh, applications stamped. It's my understanding.
Since you've been here.
No, not since I've been here, because we haven't had any applications since I've been here. Um, but my understanding from Anita is that that has been happening, that people have gone straight to the town clerk without stopping at the planner's office.
Before John created.
But going forward, they should all go to you, the clerk should not be involved until after you are finished and you locate that.
That, that happened before John put in place his policy that all of that, all of the applications had to come to him. All that came before he did that.
Yeah.
But he did that.
To stop that process, because that's what's happened, they were going around the planner's...
That's why they wanted you to, the same with the time, the timeline.
Starts right then, yeah, with the A and Rs.
Correct. Show up the night before.
So, is this a simplistic email to Anita saying, um, any occupants that have to do with planning, if they haven't gone to, um, the town planner, that's, I'm not touching to tell them.
We should be signing off on it.
I don't know.
I tell you, if we get involved with this stuff here, I want you to sign off.
That's the one thing I liked about Paxton is there was, planning board signs off before it goes anywhere. And I like that.
I'm just saying, I mean, before Anita gets that documents, it should be signed off that the planning board, and there's no provision, town planner has approved, you know, how are you gonna know too?
But I'm looking for what we can do in the short term to maybe help educate the town clerk's office in what we need to get to you.
All we really need to do is inform Anita that John's policy of all applications come to him first is still in effect.
I think what she has been saying is that when she asked people, did you go to the town planner, they have said yes. And that may not necessarily occurred.
It's still in time to get a sign off.
So the planner needs to stamp.
Right, so a sort of form that says, I agree, there is some sort of form that you sign off, that you check off, it's, it's a checklist to make sure we've received the application, we've received X, Y, or Z plans, we've received whatever, here's the signature of the town planner. Here's the signature of the town planner, take it to the town clerk's office. You could, you can now have your application stamped.
This is probably uh for some reason illegal. I said this is probably for some reason illegal, but like when I did something wrong, like an OUI. I lost my license for six months. And then I lost it for two years and then I lost it for ten and a half years. And is there anything when when it to help tries to do unscrupulous stuff? Like lie to the town about whether stuff has been done or not? Or try to get things passed that then are not like these roads that are already breaking according to. We've heard from DPW already having issues. Does the town have any recourse towards not doing any business? With that type of an entity in the future because honestly, if we were a bank and you had bad credit. We wouldn't do any business with you. And financially, the town has to pick up the tab. For all the deficiencies in any of these, in any of this work, and we don't know about it until we're we're well out of the warranty zone. Like, is there any way of establishing uh some sort of a, you have to have a good reputation, you have to have. Some sort of credit with the town that this project will go the way that you said. Is there any way to do?
I'm arguing to Alex, but you're talking between private and public and that's the difference. The private industry can do whatever they want and set whatever fines and recourse. Public, like can the public do that without bylaws? I mean, I I go into a bank and they say, I don't do business with you because I don't like it. It's a prerogative.
But when when they open up a bid for.
Banks can't say that, but I understand what you're saying. Um, um, I don't know if there is anything like that. Um, I but I do believe that the planning board should do their homework. When applications, road acceptances come before you, so you you can make wise decisions.
It's not like he loses his building.
Right, right, but like I know that when they.
Keep operating.
When they do the big dig, right, they open that whole thing up because it's a public contract.
Right.
And anyone's allowed to bid on it, but they're only gonna consider bids from reputable builders. And this is not a reputable developer in terms of having a quality product and something that the town is going to be able to. Get value out of in the long run.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is something to take into consideration as when you're accepting the streets. But technically, because the subdivision, he owns the private property, like we can't, I don't think the town can really stop him from developing. Uh, he he does have to meet certain requirements, whatever the town puts in place, yes. Um.
But I'd love to say like no more, like I just looked at no well for the first time in a in a long time, like so point three acre lots. Like, no way, man, like acre and a half, have fun.
The open space thing.
That's the open space portion.
Yeah.
I'm just, you you understand what I'm saying about about making people accountable for their actions, not only going forward, but. For the past things that they've done too that that have just taken from the town.
You can't do it that way.
Hoping we can find a way to do it.
Yes, directly he's working within our structure, our bylaws, so I mean.
But we have to be checking him at all at all these things that he's doing wrong. We have to babysit. He's not really following, he's he's following the laws that we're calling him on.
Also, things have changed. In the last ten years, some of the stuff has changed. And try to keep up with it, and that's the whole name of the game.
That's, I think that's why we're saying that having a team, this is planning board stuff, but having a a team of uh advisory board of. Of experts uh would be so beneficial because now the town is growing so fast. There is so much building going on. In adverse conditions, on hillsides and things like, how are we as as people who. Either retired or work in forty hours and not structural engineer and and you know, Mister Mountaineer this, that, those slopes and that, like. We need, we are the voice of the town, but we need some expertise and guidance. Cause like you said, like it's it's a lot.
Start by looking at bylaws of other towns which we're doing.
Yeah.
To adopt, to look at what they have and tailor it to what works for our town with our growth. But I see what you're saying is we're not a business, we can't say, oh, well, you did us dirty last time, so we're not doing it.
And the bank portion, what I was trying to get at is if you got bad credit, which means you're done bad things in the past. The bank can refuse you from doing business. They do this, right? You just can't walk in and say, no, we're not doing business with you.
Right.
But they can look to your point now, Alex, that if you've, you know, been bankrupt because you overspend yourself, they can refuse you, but that's the private side and the public. If they follow the rules, and I say follow the rules and follow things, it's gonna be tough to tell them, no, they can't do business in. In this town or area. So, but you're right, the babysitting thing, I've said that for years, I just. And and it's not Blair Development, it's it was other developers that are in town. Yeah, Len Gangle, who's no longer doing business here.
Well, Mr. Pearson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then uh. Um, there there's been, there's been issues with uh Elbag Junior. Um, you know, there's, so it's not just, it's just not clean in this town, it's been other people too that have developed here.
Got some laws on the books to protect our town.
We do, that's called the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, we need more, like like that's why this board exists, right?
Correct, but you can't do five and six bylaws at the same time. You gotta, you gotta. And this is what I told John when he first came in, he wanted to implement all these policies at once. I said, you gotta, you gotta implement policies, but you gotta take them. Piece by piece. If you try to jam everything down, it's gonna be a mess.
I think, I think probably, not to cut you off, is that um remember that there have been, there have been years where the planning board did not have a professional planner. He's probably, I mean, I don't know what he was trying to do. My guess would be that he was trying to put in a lot of. Pro uh systems in place that should have been there a long time ago, and he's playing catch up.
Oh, so was Dave George, Dave was doing the same thing before him.
So, you know, just, you know, there are a lot of things that that's there, you know, it's not brand new. A lot of this is not new.
And I'm saying to everybody, I don't want somebody to come in and say, this is how you're gonna do it, Boston. And that's what the heck, they're bringing all this stuff, not into a a a community, a small community, but from another town that's.
Larger, yeah.
Larger, huge, and you know. Right, right, that's why we like that, doing that, not South Row or whatever.
Right, and I I think that the the Paxton one is is a good one, and I think to your point too, we have to. Kind of be the aircraft controller, where they apparently they have like a board and like all the flights are on these little tabs and once, you know. Once they land, when they take it off and the next ones come on and you guide them and won't land them as they come, but. I think it's all important stuff, like Deli said, we we've got a lot.
But I do think I want to get at least do this one motion and get it to the planning board, so you've got till Thursday to add to our agenda.
I actually, well.
The planning board's agenda for next week?
I mean.
Is it too, is it too heavy now? Cause I looked at it.
It's very heavy. It'll have to be probably the other one.
I'm good with that. I just looked at it and I was like, wow, man.
Yeah, yeah, we're.
There's a lot to cover. But that doesn't mean we can't put it on the next uh agenda.
So we were talking about the motion with regards to uh all materials submitted for subdivision and preliminary definitive applications. Need to be submitted digitally and in hard copy.
Before they're submitted to the town clerk.
I like that portion of the added on.
Cause like you said, it seems to be that some people. You're not trying to slow walk the process, but if if it's done right, it is slow. For this, for an application. In a good way, not in a bad way.
So you want to submit, you want to add there that it's submitted to the to to the town planner to review for completeness. And then the applicant takes it to the town clerk.
Not.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to.
Well, I mean, shouldn't, well, I don't know if that would work though, because the applicant, doesn't, isn't the applicant responsible for mailing out the address list? Sending out the notices to the others?
We may can pay for.
They they have to pay, they have to pay for the envelopes and the postage.
But I I feel, I think if if you.
Yeah, I agree with Alex, might open you up to.
If all of a sudden, like, ah, well, the town planner, like, I gave it to them, but they didn't walk it over.
I I think the applicant should take it to the town clerk. After the.
Then you're gonna have to come up with a form.
Yeah, this, which is easy to do.
Okay, I'm fine.
I have reviewed this application and it is complete, blah, 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 blah.
You sign, town planner signs it.
Signs and dates and then keeps a copy.
Do we need a stamp?
Give you a phone.
Lord Jesus. Maybe, you're probably right. I mean, given what's been going on, you probably, maybe we should get a stamp.
Yeah, but the the problem is the official stamp is the clerk. I wouldn't have a problem with Dee having a form. She signs it and dates it, keeps a copy of that. And then the applicant picks up the the form with the documentation they have. And takes it over to the clerk to be officially stamped in. I don't think Dee should be responsible for timestamping anything.
No, she isn't saying timestamping. She's saying, I think she she wants to verify that it's actually been submitted to the town planner. That's what you're saying.
The signature portion.
Will the signature be sufficient? I'm just like.
Oh, it's that's legal.
I don't know, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, because the town clerk has a stamp, what is the town?
Well, that's because of law, they have to stamp it.
Yes.
That's that's matched general law, but it it it, I'm just saying, any town planner.
I mean, she brings up a good point, but but I but I think that maybe only, that only the town planner would have the form. So.
This is in the public form.
But if we find out that there is reason to get a stamp, then we can do that.
Okay.
For the town planner.
I wouldn't have a problem if if down the road, there's four, three or something going on, then I agree.
I mean, you do have scams and issues.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be proactive instead of reactive.
Right.
Just a thought, if we're already redoing this, why don't we do it correctly, correct the the best we can?
Practices at this point.
I can look, yeah, that should be very easy to get.
And I'm not trying to be difficult or cause problems, but no, you're actually raising a good point. No, you're 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 actually raising a good point.
That's why I had the response that I made, is you actually raised a good point.
Believe me, like it means the form should be not only signed up at the bottom, but like initialled, like. They gave me this.
That's an excellent point. We have, you have to do that anytime you.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So like, the list is there, there is a copy of verification of the inspection instead of it just being like. A letter stating completion.
I like the constructive ideas.
We obviously, knowing what that list entails would be all these. You know, and and it could be these multi, not only is it site plan review, but it it's gonna be the short. Shorter version where we're doing documents.
Yep.
You know.
But again, I wouldn't have the form that you're putting out, out on the web, that would be your personal form. I shouldn't say personally, the planner's.
Right.
Form.
Right.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with having a stamp too and and signatures. I like Keith's idea of the. Initial checklist, cause I have to do that in engineering. Every time we go through a site plan check, I gotta initial everything and date it. And then sign off at the bottom. So this would be no different than uh what you would be doing for all the documents to make sure that they're all there. As part of a checklist and a final signature and and to make it secure, I guess, put a, put the planner's stamp on it. I'm fine with that.
Now, is this a motion that gets sent to planning board?
Yeah, we don't, this is a motion to the planning board to handle.
It'll come up again.
Cause this will be a a discussion for the uh with. The subdivision regulations. This will be an added, would have been an added to the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, okay, okay, just want, just want to say, oh, looking at this this whole whole idea, whi- which I agree. You know, basically with, uh, but I think we probably should actually couple this with. Applications and documents for uh things that are governed by our bylaws. Special permits, common driveways.
Yeah.
Major home occupation.
Yeah, that's right.
Can't be done with this. Because this is subdivision.
Subdivision.
Okay, which is strictly in the hands of the planning board. If it has to do with a bylaw, that has to be a revision that goes to town meeting.
But uh, isn't there, and isn't there a a procedure document online that was created for submission? Didn't John put something on it online?
Yeah.
What's it called, the procedure document for what?
It'd be under the plan uh planning boards. Let me look again, I remember him, cause it was.
Something with regards to application procedures or.
Cause he would point anybody that's coming in for anything, here is it, and then he would ask to have a meeting with them, if they didn't understand it, to explain it to them.
Planning board forms.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to look at, I might be wrong, I need to look at the bylaws, because in the bylaws, it may have a clause. That allows the planning board to make regulations. Regarding those bylaws.
You have regulations for a site plan and special permit, right? So it's it's just, it's just the. Regulations, it's not a bylaw. And it outlines meeting with the planner, meeting with town departments, application procedure.
But have a separate regulation for forms, is that what you mean, Norm?
I I I'm just, I'm just saying that, okay, what we've written down so far falls very, very neatly into our subdivision regulations.
Yes.
Which we control all by ourselves. If we are going to require electronic submissions. For things that are not within subdivision.
Right.
But I just within the bylaws, we have to, we have to look very carefully as to whether that would require a revision. Amendment to the bylaw. Which has to do with town meetings, or is there a clause specifically in our zoning bylaw? That says that we can adopt regulations.
Well, I mean, at least that's a pertains to special permits and site plans. You have, you have regulations for that governing that process, so.
Well, I I need to see something that says that we can adopt regulations.
I mean, it's all, you already have them.
But if you wanted to adjust them or add, maybe illegal.
They are non-subdivi- non-MGL subdivision.
The one thing Norm and Dee I do see is we've got uh planning board applications, which are electronic, the Form A.
Yeah.
Definitive preliminary site plan, special permit, special permit. Site plan for subdivision modifications. And like you said, Dee, the application for change along scenic roads. And minor home application. So we've got electronic forms for those right now. And then prior to that, um, they've uh John had put together the planning board forms, which is the. Subdivision A one, the covenants, all, there's a lot of stuff in here already, address lists, electronic forms. We just have to get the individuals to fill those out.
Electronically.
Electronically and get those and get that package to Dee.
Or or they can just scan it and send it to us as long as it's clear.
Yeah, that's the thing I was, I hate to put into that recommendation of the planning board, but. I I I hate to use the word PDF.
Use it, that's standard, right?
Well, right now it is. That's the problem is if you force them to give a PDF document, is that the document that. Cause if some, if somebody can scan it in as a picture and send it to you as opposed to a PDF.
Yeah, but I don't know if you want pictures though, because.
Yeah, PDF is industry standard in this sort of thing, I would imagine.
I mean, if the picture is clear, I don't think we, you know.
That's why, that's why I was asking everybody.
Just say digital.
Okay. Cause I know in our, in our regs, we say CAD, uh, we we want uh the CAD files.
Who was the file that Britain brought up that he wanted to, he, is it, was it a. Suffolk of a CAD file? He's not like a drawing file.
He was using AutoCAD, he wanted AutoCAD type file as part of um the submission, so we would have that electronic form.
Okay.
The the problem is we don't have AutoCAD.
I don't know why that's the, why that's a requirement.
Maybe one.
Well, because we can pass that, if 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 a developer issued us an AutoCAD file that we had to. Um, send to our engineering firm, they've got AutoCAD. And they can review the dr- drawings specifically, cause with PDFs, you really can't, you know, look at the measurements or anything like that, or s- or see what they are with a CAD file. Go in and check measurements.
So I I think that the town should have documents that you guys can open, just ju- just, you know, in future. You know, you wanna look at the file, you can see it.
Typically, we've asked the developers to not only supply the AutoCAD file for use with our um. Review, but also PDF.
Yeah.
So we can, so we can have both.
Here's the thing, I think if you, if you say, uh, I'll step away from the AutoCAD, cause I've very minimal experience with that. But I would think if you regulate that it's all, let's say PDF. Then when some sort of Y two K comes around where you go, oh, PDF is no longer gonna work, we'll see that one coming. Whereas if we have, you know, MP four and, and PDF and JPG and all this other stuff, we, we might not be able to catch it as easy. But if it's all one thing, we should be able to.
That's why Alex, I was trying to get away with electronic documentation.
Right, that's why, I'm agreeing with you. That's what I'm saying.
We.
Get away from it?
We're just saying electronic documentation only, because then we could get, we could, we could get a scan of a uh, um. A picture scan, a JPG or something like that, which we really can't do anything with other than file it.
Yeah.
With a PDF, you have the ability to edit it, to make comments on it, to send back a.
God forbid they send it in some file format that, like they, they send Linux and, and the clock has already started, but we don't have Linux. And now we gotta figure all that out, like it's just.
I don't have a problem putting electronic format and put in parentheses PDF file. I mean, that, we say electronic, but then we basically say what we're looking for.
Hmm.
I don't know if that helps anybody out, if that.
That sounds simple enough.
I don't see the problem with that.
All right.
You know, and part of the checklist is, do you approve of, of whatever.
That's what I'm looking for.
You know, if you don't approve of it, you have to wait, you know, you would check it off and you.
Well, yeah, cause it.
For it to come in the way you prefer it.
Right, uncompleteness, she has to check it off. Yeah, yeah.
You know, you, you.
If it's totally, if it's clearly.
The file, it won't be checked off.
Correct. Or if it's for some.
Well, that's incomplete. That's what, in your, in your situation, Diddy, I just say, that's incomplete. I can't, I can't read it. So until you give me a file that I can read, we're not going anywhere with this checklist.
Sit for town use or, you know, it, unfortunately it's fallen to your discretion. Could, could, could a different town planner find a document? That isn't good for the town and accept it? You know, it just, you wonder how you, you know, keep it from, keep it straight. You know, not that, not that everyone's gonna have the same opinion, but hopefully everyone's interpretation of a good document is the same over, over the years that run.
Maybe you could always amend the rules and rights as needed as time goes by. It doesn't have to be set in stone. You're moving with best practices.
Yeah. Reaction, reactionary if necessary.
Hmm.
So, any more additions to this motion?
It's kind of long. I don't know if we gotta rewrite it or if you. If I can go off of what you wrote, we'll see what I wrote, you know? Or, I mean, I've timestamped a lot of stuff. It seems like a big document, you know, does it, do you have the motion?
How detailed do we have to be with regards to, I mean, the, basically the idea is that we want to have materials submitted digitally. And we, and then it needs to come to the town planner first to be reviewed for accuracy. And then a checklist, an assigned uh, form from the town planner is provided to the applicant that they can take to town clerk. That allows their, their application to be stamped. And that applies to not just subdivision rules, but all the other applications to plan that the planning board receives.
Which is under the list of, we've got two, four, six, we've got eight applications right now. They're online, they're digital. I so move. Anybody want a second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? Cause I think the discussion I was gonna have is that we've got a good, if you wanna call it thirty thousand foot level. But give this to the board to refine, um, uh, see that, that's a struggle I'm having right now. I don't have a problem putting it in the subdivision regs. But to Norm's point, can, can we make this a policy? Because we have the right to make policies, I think. I think we do.
Is that the planning board or the bylaw subcommittee? I don't know.
Policies aren't have anything to do with the bylaw subcommittee. It's just a policy of, like the planning board.
Recommendation to the planning board though, and.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can give a recommendation to the planning board and then the planning board can take it from there.
Yep. Yep. I'm, I'm fine with that. That's, only thing I wanted to get out there is, I don't think we need to make this into a bylaw or drag it out. You could do, you could make this into a policy and be enforced.
Right, and some instances you already have policies in place. Those can just be easily amended.
Correct. Yeah, that's what, that's what I'd like to do. That way we can get it implemented.
Exactly. I think a policy would make more sense than a bylaw.
Excellent.
Because this is a process, not a, it, it's to make things run more efficiently. I agree with you.
It's, it's helping government run smoothly as opposed to enforcing something. That's all I got for discussion. Anybody else sort of like it, like that? All right, and I will ask for a vote.
Hi. Yes, hi.
And O I.
Ross, I.
Yeah.
I.
Uh, I, so two, four, six to zero.
Good guys won.
All right, that's off.
Motion by Tim.
I don't know if I'm supposed to look at you.
Chairman's make motions.
I know, I know the select board had to have. It's not typically we had, so, okay, I'm good with that. I wanna make sure I'm not violating anything. All right, well, we have one nay in the uh, dog facility. All right, I think that covered sort of uh, preliminary to what we wanted to get into about the site plan. And I think before, I think Diddy brought up a great point. Before we get into talking about this, how do we wanna execute it? I think that's a bigger picture we need to uh, cover first. Do we wanna make this a separate bylaw? Do we wanna work with it into the existing site plan? Regulations, what do we wanna do? I think we gotta get that answer before we get into the meat of this thing.
You're the professional, Diddy. Do you have any thoughts?
Um, well, I was of, I was under the impression that this would likely be just an amendment to the subdivision rules. But.
The, the problem is, is like, and this is just my opinion, everybody can jump in, is the, the one I looked at Paxton, it covered business districts, new developments. What I didn't like about the Paxton thing is that the residential had to be over three thousand square feet. So it didn't cover the standard colonial that's built now of twenty-one hundred to twenty-eight hundred square feet in Rottland.
I saw that too. I'm gonna pull it up and reread it again.
So, I mean, these are just, um, this is just to help you see what other towns are doing. But you're not required to adopt wholesale copy.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, we were planning, but yeah, we typically don't, but it was just, I was trying to, you know. I, I, I'm not a from scratch guy. I like to borrow and, and uh, take from other bylaws, pieces and parts that are good.
Cut and paste.
Yeah, cut and paste. Yeah, that's a, that's a teacher thing that my friend taught me.
So Tim, it says underneath section fourteen point two.
Yep.
Be.
That's right.
Residential district, any use that requires a special permit and, so it's an and part.
Yep.
So the special permits, would that be for any, anything else?
It's special permits typically in residential. I don't know if we have any. Somebody's gonna have to help me. I don't. To build in a residential district, we have special permits, but um.
Yep.
But the way, again, this is just Paxton. They're saying to the requirements for site plan review and approval. Like Amanda said, in residential district, any use that requires a special permit and. So it's basically limiting you to the very small section.
Well, keep in mind, I don't believe that Rottland has a site plan approval uh, section in its bylaw. I don't think you currently do.
Um.
In general bylaws.
General, it's, it's in the general.
No, 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 no. That's what you're trying to.
Right, in, in your bylaw, I don't believe that there is a site plan approval section. It's, I don't believe it's in there.
Such permits only?
Uh, yeah. Um, we, it looks.
It's not a general, like it's not a separate bylaw. Maybe it outlines that site plan approval may be required for, in certain instances. But there's no standalone bylaw.
No, of site plan? I don't think so. I think it's referenced inside of a regulation.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think it's mentioned in the zoning districts, if there's site plan requirement. There's a table actually. John put a table together if I remember right.
Right.
For site plan review.
Right, yeah, which may be the case, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that there is no.
There's some places over there. There are specifics.
I see special permits. There's a, there's an article on, for special permits.
Yep.
I don't see anything for.
Diddy, I think you're right. I don't think it's a specific bylaw norm for site plan. It was, it, it was basically, the site plan was tied like inside the solar. Inside the dispensary. It was all.
Yeah.
Let me call it reference requirements for tho- for those specific bylaws, but it didn't stand by itself, if I remember right.
Saying that we actually have several of them.
Yes. And that's why John was putting together that um, uh.
Uses table.
Yeah, uses table, correct. Yeah, try to get everything in one place, cause having it all over wasn't helping us as a planning board at all.
Sure.
And he even did in the application, he's got a checklist of which specific site plan you need. VC zoning district, LI zoning district. Adult entertainment, agriculture acc- agricultural accessory uses, cell tower. LILO zoning district, common driveway, medical marijuana and solar. So I would assume that all of those articles. Or quote bylaws, which were articles, would have site plan in it. But to your point, Diddy, it's not standing alone.
Correct. It's not a standalone, like, like Paxton has.
Yeah, they've got a standalone.
It's a smaller authority, you know.
Not the flexibility to decide, do you wanna create a separate bylaw? Or if you, if you're, if this is simply right now pertaining to subdivision, you might just need to update your rules and regulations.
Would you not need to go to the uh, the town meeting?
Probably not. We can check with town council if we wanna double check with the best way to go forward, but.
Bylaws have to go to town meeting. Regulations, we just have, for subdivision, just have to be uh, uh, what's uh. We, we write it, we'd approve it, and then we have hearings on it.
Hmm. This sounds like a regulation on a bylaw to me.
Yeah, that's the problem, the reason I wanted, and, and again, this is me personally, but the rest of the committee think is a bylaw. Is, is to Alex's point down the road, we got some enforcement, um, not only in just subdivision regs, but A and Rs. Um, industrial if it's coming out.
Let's go that route.
Well, I mean, well, let's, let's, I mean, first of all, this, yeah, and, and that may be the case. But just keep in mind, this came out as a result of an issue with subdivisions. So we can address the low hanging fruit, which is. Have that, have, have, have that amended, uh, with regards to the bylaw, which is quite frankly, a much bigger discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, that, that's a big discussion.
That's why I said, we're not getting this ready for November. That's not gonna happen.
Right.
But we could, to your point, get the low hanging fruit and get the regulations set up and get it passed this year. Get a hearing for that. That's a possibility.
That sounds like a win-win right there.
I want, I wanna have what the whole committee wants to do and uh, I can adjust the agendas as such.
I personally think that's probably the best way to go about it, cause then you're, you're not only setting up for the long term with, with.
I don't need a motion for this. I just need a straw vote.
But you're getting it right now.
I got a yes, I got a yes, Keith.
Um, uh, my question came up in my head when I was driving home was, say, for example, I brought up this soil compaction thing in my head. Well, I know nothing about soil compaction, but say an engineer would, someone who does, or a builder, or someone who's willing to. Um, divvy up the, the information for me to say to you guys, hey, I know what to write for it, but is it, should, should a lot, should we come up with? And this is may connect to what we're talking about or not on politics. Um, you know, synopsis of all the things we wanna do with the site plan. And then, for example, like Kevin Quinn, can, can Kevin, can we hire someone to write this to, to quicken it for us?
I mean, in terms of like documents that you need in the review process or?
Well, cause it, you know, you can, you, for example, if I said soil compaction, you know, it's, you, you need a lot there to, to tell. Someone how to, um, you know, say it's your building inspector. Yeah, so like, I don't have that knowledge. Could I pull it from another thing or?
Or you, or you, well, during, and last year, your peer review would come in, you would, you would um, hire a geotechnical engineer to help you with that and other planning boards.
I was wondering when.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's too early to talk about that, but I was gonna say, can we, can we create? Our list and then give it to someone to write it for us? Cause it may be a lot for you to write too. It, it, it. Is there a way to get it? And then we review it and then we go, hey.
We typically, in the past would. Again, I, I like Norm's phrase, we would cut and paste together a, a document.
I don't mind who's comfortable doing it, it's just.
And then we would send that out to review to legal.
Legal, yeah.
Have them look it over and see if there's something they want to add. That's where you get the land use attorney that can look at it and say, listen, you missed this. And give us comments back.
Yeah. Obviously, the cheapest way to do is if we, we write it, the review, or I mean, is there a way to just, I'm not saying.
I would per.
This'll take a long time, but I just, I know it's a lot.
The reason I like this, this committee to do it and then send it out for review is, you're the residents of Rottland. You know what you want. Sending it out to somebody outside, you're sort of asking somebody that doesn't live here to be able to curtail what you want as a town.
I'm seeing with guidance, of course, you know, and that's, I don't know how much.
Yeah.
How, and I'm not saying I.
No, 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 you can.
I don't know how good we'll write it. I don't mind that we would write a good one. Not saying we're, we're under um, water or anything. But I've seen, you know, when you look at how detailed they are, um, can we keep up with, I'm not saying we can't, but. Can you outsource it? I guess is all I'm saying, or is it?
But it was nice when, when, in a way that Norman, Norman and I, uh, when I first got on board, we had DCR come down. And we worked on open space subdivision. And uh, so helped me going through the whole subdivision that, that taught me an awful lot by doing that. And rather than having somebody come in and just hand it off.
Yeah, I guess I'm not saying even hand it off, but if, if someone can accompany us through that.
Well, I think that's kind of what we're doing, if we cut and paste and then send it to legal, especially if it's a more of a land attorney, they can say. I, I kinda see what you guys have covered here with all these items you've painted in here and this is a better way to put it together. Or you're not gonna cover your, this step fully here unless you add this, that sort of thing. So I think we're covering that. It's just a matter of how we're getting it done.
And also, we need to use CMR PC.
Okay.
We write something up, show it off to them.
We get hours from him from going to uh, um.
Norm, what is that?
Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They, they do a lot of the dirty work for people in the biggest towns.
They're literally the planning board for the central Massachusetts.
So they owe us?
No, 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 what we do is we, we go to.
I'm using the wrong word, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We go to their meetings and things like that and you get points and now you, use the points to do something like.
We have points banked.
I don't know what we've got this year. I don't, I'd have to, you'd have to ask, um.
It's like the reward system at your local subway.
Works for me. So if we have this resource and we have points in the bank, should we utilize that? If they're the expert? I don't know.
If we ever need any of the meeting. Yeah, we can, we have to make our own decision, write up what we get. Say, this looks pretty good. Do we think we need any more expertise or have we done the job? It's not a good time.
Yeah.
It needs a little bit more work.
Your review? Yeah, we get a peer review from CMR PC and uh, and then once we get back from them and it has, in my opinion, I'll let the committee. But it should go to legal before um, we send it to the planning board.
Absolutely.
Bylaw changes, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I interrupted.
Subdivision change.
No, that's just regs. That can be internal.
I have no problem with it.
And was that the question of whether or not we're gonna use regulations instead of a bylaw? I thought that was part of what some.
I think what, what, at least I'm getting, I got a partial straw vote. I haven't got everybody yet. It's that we wanted to tack the subdivision regs, like I like to use the term, the low hanging fruit with this site plan. Or the site plan update and then get that in place. So any new subdivisions or anything coming in, has this built into the regs already? You got an idea? I can see those wheels turning.
Yeah, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna wait.
Yeah, and then eventually create a bylaw for it too that covers.
I don't know about that one. I don't.
See how far it goes.
That, that's my big question. Do, do we want to make this site plan review necessary on all lots?
I think so.
I think it's, it's an idea.
Um.
But there's gotta be a bylaw, is that what you're saying?
I believe so.
But if we do it, then.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna look at our zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Because that one little clause, whether it's in there or not, makes all the difference in the world.
Yeah. And then the other thing too is that I realize that every subdivision is developed differently. So for example, in some instances, the lot is sold to the, to the owner. And so now they're responsible for, are they responsible for the application process at that point with regards to building permits and that sort of thing? So that might be seen separately. That would technically not really be, that would be a separate process from the subdivision.
I've never seen another builder on Blair's property, uh.
Already accident, but.
Right, but I mean, what, but, I mean, in terms of.
That can happen, as we just.
What, no, what I'm saying is that, um, technically, I know that the lot is a part of a subdivision, right? But technically, it's not part of the plan that was submitted. So I'm just wondering if we're governed, if that is, if that can be governed by the subdivision rules and regulations as to. You know, I'm, I'm just not sure about that. Where, where the appropriate place would be to, to put this, um, requirement? Maybe it is in the subdivision rules. Maybe it's something that has to be included in the decision and the, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure.
I think it should be in the subdivision rules because look what he did, Bryce Lemon, he reformed the whole hill down there. So it should be prior to him doing anything before he sells the lot.
Okay.
And so, I, I.
So prior to the sale of the lot, that makes sense. That way it's on the developer.
Yeah.
Which to me, I do, I do agree. I agree.
Cause a homeowner is not gonna pay that kind of money, you know, to have his lot reshaped in there.
And they may not know.
And that you can't do it because it's so close together, all the houses.
The problem is you can't, you couldn't get specific like they did in Paxton, because a lot is, they're going into details of, of actually the build with, you know, utilities, landscaping. You, I don't think, could you go into that if, if it's just selling a lot? I could, the topo, no problem. I have no problem with that with the topo, but you couldn't require a developer.
I think you could.
To before he, so he's basically gonna say how he's laying out the house and everything.
The town council?
Yeah, that's what, I would have to, I'd, I would think.
Exactly. There are, I believe that there are. I've seen some rules where they're very specific about, like that you have to show the elevations of the house. It's very detailed.
Okay. We don't have that in our regs right now.
But it would give you a, a very clear idea, you know, of a lot of things.
I think, I think I do want elevation of the complete lot, because to show how steep the banking is behind the house, right? You know, two, two feet behind the, the back door, you drop off at a forty-five degree angle.
We would, we would force the developers basically to develop the property before they sold it.
Yeah, that's right.
Which leaves not just the house.
Yeah, usually they have to do that anyways, because in order to put the road in and get all the infrastructure in ground, that's.
Not in the past here. They've just got the roads in and then whatever hills in this cul-de-sac or the thing gets moved around and, uh.
Yeah.
Adjusted.
Adjusted, yeah. See, this is what I'm, I'm still wondering, cause I haven't seen anything like it here. Can we put literally either restrictions or requirements for, say, particular slopes?
Hmm.
You know, if, if a lot happening to have a slope of.
Fifteen percent greater.
Fifteen percent greater. Can we put any requirement that, uh, you know, this must be stabilized and whatever by a particular method?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, well, if you do, if you do peer review, then I, you know, I would think that a, you know, a structural engineer would be able to review each site plan and say, you know, well, this doesn't look good.
As soon as I can, we put those kind of regulations in effect.
You could.
I, I haven't seen that.
I would be cautious about how specific we would be, and this is out of my scope, but with what I know. But if we put, you have to put this retaining wall, you have to do this, you have to do that.
You're painting somebody in a corner.
Yeah, so I agree. I think that there should be specific verbiage that says the slopes need to be secured. I agree. But I don't know how we go about doing that.
It could be dynamic based. Well, I, but, but again, to your point though, this is where peer review is really important.
Would MRCP help us with that? Am I, is that the right?
No, no, we would have, we, we are at liberty, of course, the planning board is at liberty to hire whoever they deem.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Well, fine to do.
Correct. Whatever, whatever, whatever is coming up for that subdivision, whatever the issue is, you hire a team of experts that can advise you based on the dynamics. If it's a very simple subdivision plan, then obviously, maybe you only need a civil engineer with certain expertise.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Erosion, like erosion people.
Mm-hmm.
Just like, uh.
Environmental scientists.
The house on Woodside, uh, the cul-de-sac, they had to put a wall in there. Anything, we had a, anything over so many feet high, had to have a structural engineer sign off.
Anything, I think it's eight feet, is it? Anything above eight feet, a retaining wall has to have a structural engineer sign off.
Yeah. Cause that wall, that was what, at least twelve, fourteen foot at least.
Wow.
Yeah.
On help, Woodside?
Yeah, I feel the top of Woodside.
Yeah.
I can't remember the cul-de-sac, did it, you know, it was up in the back of cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that was tough.
That's one of the. Off Asharnak, go all the way to the end.
It doesn't have rocks. It's, is it near the crossing? Cause I know those people have some walls. But that's, um, Oakley Circle or something like that.
Well, just drive up sixty-eight and look on your right at that, uh, structural wall for the, somebody's driveway goes up the side. I'd like to see the engineering piece stand for that wall.
Yeah.
I can tell there is one, cause it was part of the development of the house, not because it was A and R. So I don't know. Again.
Leaves us out. Is that an old house or?
No, it's new. New. It's probably within the last three, four years.
Is that the one? It's kind of like what happened to fence.
Yeah, I'm getting off topic, but what I want to do is.
Yeah.
Um.
And like legal makes you put a fence at the top of the hill that tall, like you, example, MGL.
Use, I don't know. That's out of my, uh, knowledge base. All I know is the eight foot and above, you have to have a structural engineer sign off on a retaining wall.
Is it something where after, say, the, say, our allowed slope is fifteen, after fifteen, we require a second source to tell us, you're not gonna cause, this proj- project is not gonna cause a problem. And if their suggestion is you.
At Diddy's point, you get the team of people to look at that if it gets above fifteen or whatever the number we get.
Yeah. Do we need to decrease the number? Should we do ten? Or is fifteen a standard?
Uh, I would ask that question as a, as to.
Fifteen is a.
My pay grade.
That's not very much.
Roof is what you.
What is the?
So it's a hundred feet, it's only fifteen feet.
Ten pitch roof is, is not very steep. That's a very, very subtle.
Yeah. Would you measure the front yard and then the back? And it's the, I mean, pattern math from the front lot to the back of the lot. So it could be steep and then like that, but.
The house is gonna be.
Technically, that's the slope, no matter what the height of one into the other. But, um.
Well, we've got that to play. So I, I guess we're still in sort of the trench of, do we just do this for the subdivision rules and regs? Or do we expand this into, cause if you expand it into a site plan, you're gonna have to go back to two, four, six, eight, nine separate bylaws and reference a, not just site plan, but a site plan bylaw.
It sounds messy.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. This, this is why engineers never put the same, uh, like a, a number in six different documents, cause then you gotta go back and fix all six documents. You put it in one place and reference it to, uh, uh, us. Like, this bylaw would be referenced in all, all six or seven of these, instead of just saying site plan. But again, that's, we didn't think about that then. Now we're thinking about it, so. That's why I'm trying to figure out to.
Yeah.
I, I personally like Diddy's. I would rather attack what we, what we can't attack now, which is subdivisions. And if we want to expand this to a bylaw, then we take that on.
I think that's probably the farthest way, cause we've seen before when we, we, uh, at the town, wait. Well, yeah, we, the people, uh, passed the wetlands bylaw. And right before that came up, the property on one twenty-two was, they put in for the, the permit on that, that's right on the, the tread on the wetlands, cause they wouldn't have been allowed to do it afterwards.
Oh, so they would, they dropped below the twenty-five feet to be able to get approval to build houses?
They, they essentially told them like, you're, you're at the limit here, and then we're extending that wetlands bylaw. But my point is, is that they will try and get in before we can take any action. So the quicker way that we can get to a point where we can enact this is probably better. And then we can work on the long term after that.
I'm okay with doing that, of attacking the, uh.
Well, the reg goes quicker, cause it doesn't require.
Town meeting at bylaw wouldn't, and you gotta prep that, you've gotta go through legal review, and then you've gotta get it to the select board to get on a warrant.
Yeah.
Bear in mind, we only have two slots. We agreed, our two slots, right, for the town meeting?
Oh, we can do more. I just, we were planning on doing two.
We agreed on two.
We can do more. I mean, the, the select board can't limit us to one or two.
I brought up, could we put in more and then say, actually, we don't want it, and we thought that would not look good, or am I thinking about something else?
Time when we have to tell them. Right now, it's, it's a matter of what do we want to try and take on, and then and in October or whatever, we have to tell them like, this is what we bring to the table. We don't want to tell them more than that.
Cause they typically open up the warrant, just for like.
This is that deadline.
And that's it.
They gave us an email about it. You know, like hit all those points. If you didn't get that, let us know.
I did not get that.
Well, that was a planning board thing, but essentially, we, we, yeah, we filed that.
We could put.
And you can't, you can't get on a warrant unless you, if you miss.
I, yeah, I think everybody.
You sent, yeah, yeah, you sent it.
I think it was to Mika.
Yeah, send it out.
That's why it's premium point, cause you got a lot of time to.
Send it back up from there.
Hold it at the table, to show all of the.
Yeah. So many calendar.
Amanda, I agree with you. I think just based on the, the timetable of having the warrant article open in September, we probably only got a shot at doing a couple of these to get them on there as placeholders and being able to, the low hanging fruit, which is, if we can pull off the accessory dwelling update and the open space cleanup, then those are probably the best two that we can get on.
Yeah.
And then we can take care of the, um, site plan, we'll call it, design for the, uh, uh, subdivisions as part of a regulation, not a bylaw that needs to be put onto the, uh, town warrant articles. And then after we get that done, we can decide if we're gonna move on and make it a bigger. And then we can attack that maybe for the spring town meeting, if that so is the wish of the committee.
I don't mind it, cause I know those A and, those houses in particular on Palm Gossett, those were, those were A and Rs, and they're causing us the biggest problems, so.
They were, well, they're part of a subdivision, but they were A and R.
Way down.
Oh, I thought they were part of the subdivision, and they were A and R.
Way up. No, they have.
Done at the same time.
Yeah.
It was done at the same time.
Okay. I have to look. I thought they were.
They're the ones like.
I know they'd have been my property if I'd have bought that house up on, uh, Arrowhead.
Yeah.
Not, I'd have never sold them, I tell you that right now.
Uh, yeah, just, it would be good to still to do, like, like everyone's saying, low hanging fruit, make a, do the subreg and then just the other one building for spring possibly, or fall, spring or fall to fall.
Excellent.
As a bylaw.
I think we accomplished what I was trying to do, is get the big picture of where we were gonna go. So I didn't really want to get into the meat of it tonight. I wanted to get where we wanted to go.
So you feel like we did?
I think we accomplished more than I expected tonight.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna do something else completely, so I didn't know what to expect tonight.
I looked these over, but I, I, when I was thinking about this at work today in between getting yelled at, low pluses, um, I thought, we, we gotta get the thirty thousand feet covered, and then we can get down into the weeds. And I didn't think we had that squared away, uh, where we wanted to go. The bylaw thing, I just didn't think, I, I didn't know what we did. And now that I look at this, with site plan review with seven different bylaws that it's in, I'm just like, if we tried to do, what's the word I'm looking for? In overall, I think it'd be messy, really.
Well, I mean, keep in mind that you have a site plan regulation, so that is what governs all of those different provisions, so.
We got some in place.
Right, so you, you might, it might just be, if, if there is something about the site plan review process that you wanted to amend, you would just review, likely would, likely, um, it's possible that you would just be, um, editing that, um, those regulations. But I guess it depends on what it is that you're looking to change. But I mean, what you could do is take some time to take a look at the regulations and then, you know, to sort of see, you know, what, what possibly needs to be updated or revised. I mean, this was revised fairly recently, last year. But I mean, you can always revise it again if necessary. That's not a problem. Um, yeah.
Um, so I guess what we need to do is, now that we've got a plan, the next meeting, we should get into the meat of it for subdivision regs.
Right. I mean, I think what we could, I, I mean, this is just my suggestion.
I'll take anything.
Um, is to probably just look at just the, um, subdivision rules and figure out where would be most appropriate to add um, a provision about site plan approval. Um, and that's not very difficult. Um. We can, we can create a separate section for that, or we could just put it under an existing section, just wherever it would appear to be appropriate.
Mine, sorry. Uh, short question, real quick, would be, you know, the developers submitting this hydraulic study, um, for example, would, um, you know, I'm not saying that they use that as like, hey, I gave you everything, here's something that says where the rain's gonna go. Well, obviously drainage is a whole different story, but like, having someone, and again, I think we already said, I'm probably repeating myself, but how do, how do you just take their hydraulic study and say, but is this good for the property?
Peer review.
Peer review. Yeah, that's a key. And who can, who can really say to the developer, yeah, it's not gonna work, you gotta fix this?
A specialist in, specifically in that, yeah.
So, yeah, well, as, as long as we write stuff like that, they can't just go, well.
Well, it's already there. Yeah, that's what peer, that's what peer review is. So it's at the planning board's discretion to use their judgment and say, well, you know what? This is the plan that we have. Who do we need to help us to fill in our knowledge gaps?
Yeah.
And some, and I think also too, it helps to just go out to the site and take a look at.
We do the sidewalk, for sure, we do.
Just take a look and there are many problems you can see right away that we need to talk to somebody about, you know, obviously soil, drainage, this is a high elevation. We need a structural engineer.
What's the thing where only the planning board's allowed to walk in the property, even though when it's a public meeting that the public can't walk into, cause it is private, private.
We have to arrange with the applicant.
Okay, yeah, we've typically done that. We've always done that.
I do think it is in our.
You can.
That we do have the right to.
Yeah.
We can.
Yeah, as, as an elected official of planning board, you can go drive, like Arrowhead's private right now. Hmm. I can drive it.
Yeah.
And if, and if I was told to get off, I could send him here on official business.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, and Diddy, you could do the same thing as the planner. She's over checking out a plan on official business. And if the developers choose to off, it's not gonna be a good look.
Cause some of these pieces of property, they're so big, it's like, the problem's like two acres in.
You can't see.
Yeah, that's how I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, that's why I've taken the truck over to Bryce Lemon to go to that's.
Yeah.
Down by the, uh, the crossing, so I could, uh, see what's there.
Yeah.
Like I said, the, I don't like that. And, you know, how, how, how does DEP step in for crying out and say, you know, no, we're changing the culvert to a dirt base?
That would be a good one, but, uh, I'll let that play out. I'm not getting in the middle of there.
Well, I, I'm, I'm playing into it because I, I don't like it, period. In thirty years, it's washed out.
I, I don't think DEPs, yeah, we'll, we'll let them. I, I, I think they're well aware of what's going on there, and they're not gonna let it happen just to whatever they want, so.
Well, the culvert is it.
He's proceeding at his own risk and put it in all he wants, and if, if mass, if the DEP says no, then he's gotta get ripped out. At Bryce Lemon.
I. Well, it's, it's put in according to DEP for crying out, so what I saw.
I don't think so. The email that I got, that Tameka sent, said there's.
Yeah, it seems like the, the state's still in a holding pattern.
Exactly.
It seems like, like the developer's saying that they're good to go and they're proceeding, but the state's like, nah, dude, like, we haven't signed off.
Exactly, I read it too.
Do what you want, but until you get the okay from us.
Yeah.
And it, it seems like they're making it sound like everything's all right to try and make us think like it's proceeding, but it's not.
I read that, that email, and I, I didn't, I read what you did, Alex. We're not done yet. We haven't, we haven't given an official position.
They're still, they're still talking to them. They haven't opened up the office door yet.
Yeah. So I guess I'll consider, one, we've, we've covered what we needed and. Yeah, so I guess I'll consider one, we've, we've covered what we needed and we'll be on the next. I guess we'll consider that old business since we've covered it for talking about the uh site. And I won't call it bylaw, I'll call it site plan modification to the subdivision regulations. Um, like I said, number two, we're, we'll wait eleven days. I'm not going to get excited about it. We'll put it on the next meeting. As still new business, I will do my best to keep trying to get Mr. Carbono on the phone so I can figure out, get that updated document so I can, and when I get it, I, like I said, I'll email the deal of me a few.
Somewhere.
You think?
It was, it's on the, so it is, it actually is bugging me a little bit.
Okay.
Jonathan didn't really leave a whole heck of a lot for you to pick up on, at least, but I can see.
Um, well, he did. There was a list on the board. Um.
But that's, as far as written by him, he had in progress, that's all. But I do think, I do think there was a very, a very slim file folder. And I think it may have, he may have outlined in that changes that he wanted to make to the open space.
Okay.
Somewhere in the back of my mind.
To the open, oh, to the open space bylaw?
Uh. Yeah.
He, he means, he did an email real quick.
Anybody could stop by and take a look. That's fine. I, I, I'm not sure.
There was a file folder that he left and had only a few sheets paper.
Pages?
So, yeah, they, they take a look around. Uh, and again, maybe my mind is conjuring something that wasn't really.
But I'll, I, I guess I'm going to need some help. If he gets me a document, should I send it to Delia to have her distribute it? Because if I distribute it, is that considered an open space violation?
Open meeting?
Open meeting. I put space on my mind.
Uh, not if you're, not if you're delivering.
You're sending information out.
For the next meeting.
Yeah.
To review, but not talk about. Okay. I just, I'm fearful of this open, open meeting violation because there's a few people in town that like to use that as a hammer, as opposed to what we're trying to do is make progress. So, okay, old business. I just wanted to talk about this because I don't think, at this point, we need to get into it because I don't think, I, I don't know. I haven't asked. Do we have any, where are we going with this, with the sixty eight study? I don't, I didn't see the completed.
It's a long term.
Yeah.
Is, is that for the, is, is that for the bylaw? Sorry, actually, no, I see.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to figure out if, if we've got something surmised that we could talk about to actually put in context of what we want to do with sixty eight. And I remember we had the study done. We had, um, I just don't know.
Seven hundred applicants or seven hundred returns.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we had a lot of people. I just don't remember, Norm, if John surmised that into a.
Did this short presentation?
Yeah, a document that we could use to move forward. That's what I'm struggling with.
He must have a summary of it. It must, it must be on, on his computer. Sometimes, just, just have a, a map of sixty eight. The layout, the layout of property all the way up through, you know, back a couple hundred feet or whatever. I'll put my two cents worth in at about the beginning of it, you know, how much APR on the property.
Okay.
And zone A, which is watershed.
Is that something get from the assessor?
Yep.
Ask for a map of sixty eight of the layout of the properties?
Yeah.
You could, you could get it from the, uh, line G I S.
I was going to say, ask Tamika to pull it, you know, make a map of it and send it, send it to us or.
You can, you could pull it up on the G I S website.
You mean the one that the, the assessors use with all of the, uh? Okay.
Talk to Amy.
Yeah, I'll give Amy a call. Okay.
But I'm just saying, you guys got a nice printer out outside of your office and Tamika's office that can make a beautiful map.
Oh, it's a plotter. That's right. I forgot. That was paid for by the town.
That's right. And, and then we can bring it to the next meeting or have it at dispatch and we can pick it up to look at it or, you know, have a discussion. And that way they can take my red pen and start making marks all over it like I do with, I'm like that.
Um, okay.
But for public use too, if it's, you print out one nice copy, you could leave it in town, kind of like the town app, I think is in the.
Request comments, public comments, or feedback or what they'd like to see, I think.
Well, they've already passed the way, so, yeah, I guess, but if this is going to be, this seems to be so big that everyone, not that it would be just like, just us five, but you know, if it's available, if people do, yeah, make a comment that hasn't already made a comment, maybe so that they're still involved in the discussion. Because it's, it's a pretty big project to re.
This will be a very big project. This will require public information sessions and everything.
Yeah, wow. So I mean, to print out a map, at least one we can use for the future too.
Well, probably one, maybe a couple of copies.
Yeah, probably.
Have the working copies for us to.
Yeah, okay.
Literally lay out on the table.
Yeah, yeah, some for us.
What is the role of this committee in relationship to the sixty eight thing that's going on? Because I remember I filled that out.
To create a new zoning district on sixty eight.
So that's our jurisdiction.
Yeah, because it would be a bylaw basically, for, it'd be a zoning bylaw for a new district.
Okay.
So that was, that was the plan and the first step of it was to get input from the community.
Yes.
By survey and then take that survey and the planner was to digest it and then spit it back out to us. And then we were going to see what we could do with that, suggestions from that survey.
And that survey, because it was responded, was it analyzed already?
It was, so I mean, it has a small presentation on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'd have to grab.
Pretty positive. He, he, yeah, he tabled it and then pie charted it and so.
I'm gonna.
Yeah, he had a whole presentation, dude. He's got to have that presentation.
I was gonna ask, can you see if you can find that anywhere in the files that you've got?
On Route sixty eight?
Yeah, on an, an analysis or a PowerPoint presentation.
One of his last meetings.
Yeah, I know.
Should that have been like May?
Um.
Was it a public meeting or was it private?
It was a planning board meeting. It was recorded.
Planning board.
Yeah.
Do you remember when it was?
It's before the election. I know that.
Yeah.
Well, because it might be online.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be on record.
I just don't think the files would be the, the, the printouts might be, but the files, that's why I want to get my hands on those files and take a look at that.
At least we know what day it was. We might be able to at least see when he probably last would have modified it and find it by date.
Folder in, in the computer that Delia has that we have that there.
I could check.
See what she got. She can be a text or an email on either of them. If you got some.
I could probably send that to the entire.
Oh, perfect, yeah. Perfect. Send to everybody.
Like a PPT file, PowerPoint.
PowerPoint. Does everybody work in Microsoft in this group?
I can make it work.
Okay. All right. Um, I guess that's uh number one, our whole business. I will open it up to the public. Anyone?
All the public is here.
I want to go say, bud.
Just one thing I'm going to tell you people that I am going to push like crazy. I, I, I am so sick what I've been hearing lately. I want to see in the bylaws, everything's got to be signed off. I am so sick and tired of how many things are not brought up to the building inspector for crying out loud that get by a whole bunch of other people. I don't want to sue the town.
Yeah, there's.
So help me Christ, the crap that's going on.
Harold enlightened me in my uh, in, in, I shouldn't say Harold, I can't say it, the building inspector. Enlightened me on some of the stuff that should be in our files that we didn't get, that just didn't get there. He did show me what I was looking for, which was the plot layout of the house with the uh tapos and stuff like that that's done by the civil engineer that's developing that piece of property. And that was in the viewpoint, I think, if I'm not mistaken, so.
That is actually.
Yep. And it, from, again, this is what the building inspector told me, that that should be in our subdivision files. Those, um.
Why haven't I, I, I.
I didn't know.
Did you ever see one before?
Dick, I looked at, at the building inspector and said, you just taught an old dog new tricks. Because I did not know that was part of a file for the subdivisions that should have been sent to us or gotten to us or any of the above.
Never, never knew that. What's the file?
It's in the viewpoint system, so somehow that would, had to been printed out and, and sent to the planning board because we wouldn't, we don't have access to the viewpoint system.
Specifically are we talking about? Because I'm, I'm, I'm a little.
Layout of how the house.
The property, think of the individual properties in the subdivision. There's a, there's a drawing that's submitted to the building inspector that shows the house layout, setbacks, topo, how the driveway is laid out.
Sure.
Stuff like that. And, and the building inspector said, this is something the planning board should have in all, for every piece of property in the subdivision.
Sure, what I think is what we're, we're trying to address with the site plan.
But supposedly these have been available for years, or I shouldn't say years, since the viewpoint system's been put in.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
But it is.
But the planning board has no jurisdiction over it because that's not what's in your rules, it's not in your bylaw.
It's exactly what it was to me was that's something that the planning board should have, that is, should be in their files for the subdivision. It's required.
Right.
I said, it's never been sent to us and never.
No, I think, I think probably what he's suggesting is that your rules and your bylaw should permit you to do that.
Okay.
I, I, I can't speak on his behalf. I think that's what he is suggesting.
And I was trying to keep it calm because he was really wound up, so.
Right. I think, I think what, what, um.
And I told him, that's what I was trying to put through Delia when I was speaking on the planning board about what we should get with the building inspector. I said, I apologize that maybe I didn't present it well, but that's what I was looking for, a specific, I'll call it site plan of the property of showing the layout and how the house was put, any drainages, driveway, topo. I said, that's the piece of the puzzle. And he goes, well, that stamp down there, the PE stamp says it all. Said again, you're teaching me something I didn't even know existed because I have no access to the viewpoint system.
What's a PE stamp?
Professional engineer.
Oh.
Um.
Well, I, I think he was saying that, you know, whatever, whatever is within his purview, um, as per the building codes and the, um, bylaw, that's what, you know, he's basically following that.
And we, and he says that, that those documents should be part of our quote file for the subdivision.
He, I think what he's suggesting is that the, the, the planning board should have review of each particular site at, you know, in the site plan.
He hadn't in the past, so we didn't even keep any documents of it, I know of.
You're saying it comes in late because it, it's at the building inspectors?
No, no, no.
Or it's been there the whole time and we haven't really gone to.
It's been there the whole time.
Receiving them. He's been receiving them, but the planning board has not been reviewing the site plans, the individual site plot plan.
An R, you mean?
Those plot plans.
Plot plans.
Those actual documents are probably not created until the builder is applying for a building.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what the building inspector said.
Something that we get with our application for subdivision, or they haven't been created yet.
Right, but what he's, but again, this is, this goes back to what you can say in your subdivision rules. You can outline when you believe it's appropriate to receive a site plan, uh, uh, application.
Did you call it a building permit? What was the wording for this?
It's, it's a plot plan.
The plot plan is a, that's, the plot plan has to be submitted as part of the building, as part of the building permit process.
For each individual lot, it's, it's a.
But that's what has the house setback.
Yeah, where the drainage is. And not only that, because when the town takes over the road, they need that plot plan to know where the hookups are.
Yeah.
Where the easement ends and, and all that, so.
But from the building inspector's, uh, and this is what the building inspector said, I'm just making sure the house is within the setbacks. Everything else in that drawing, to be correct, is covered under that PE stamp. So if something's incorrect, it's not the building inspector's responsibility to basically check that. It's the PE that designed that plot. His, he.
He's the one who.
Building inspector said, I just basically look at what my jurisdiction is.
My question is, is that say you go to the registered deeds. When the inspector approves the PE stamp, do you really get that document? Or do you get the old document that we approved with just the lot? Or is it a, a full?
Yeah, no one, it's a drawn one.
Do they replace it?
I, I, I don't know that. All I know is what the registered deeds has is our definitive plan.
The courthouse.
Yeah, when we pull files, they don't have the plot plan, right?
No, I, I.
They just have the one.
Don't, don't take my word. I've got to say ninety nine chance of that.
It's in that viewpoint system.
Plot plan for the building permit does not go to the courthouse.
It just sits in the towns.
Just sits in the towns.
You could always ask the building inspector that question because he's very knowledgeable. He knows his job and uh.
But he can't double back and say, here's all these documents that I'm going to let you have for free.
Well, it's not free. We, we.
I know, but like everyone.
Have them pulled from that whole viewpoint system.
You can provide those to the planning board.
Every time he gets one, can you just like?
Well, he does, but I'm just, he could, he could. And he, and he does send it.
He does.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's in a subdivision, it's provided to the, the planning office. And basically, the only jurisdiction that I have my understanding is that if the subdivision has been approved.
Goes in the file, wasn't it?
It's approved.
Yeah, so you're not really looking at it unless a problem happens and then you can bring up.
If there's, yeah, if it doesn't meet, um, something within the planning board's decision, then that's a different story. Um, but the planning board.
Catches it.
Right, but the planning board, um, does not do individual, you know, each, law one, law two, law three. They don't look specifically at each.
Yeah, we just get, either we're lucky enough and they tell us where the houses are going, or they don't give us anything.
And typically in the subdivision definitive plan, they're just giving you a house slash lot count.
Don't, do you get the building, uh, the building, I don't know, the, the building envelope? Or that, is there a construction zone specifically where they show you where you can kind of, uh.
Assume the house.
Where the house is going to be.
There is a building envelope.
Yeah.
Envelope.
Yeah.
Which, which is specifically within setbacks.
Yeah.
Correct, right, right.
And occasionally they'll put the, they'll put a little shadow in for this is where the house is going to be.
Mm-hmm.
But that isn't, we can't take that as gospel because it's not a building, um, permit application.
Right.
And particularly, they, they, they honestly don't know.
Yeah.
You know, the builder's building a house for an individual person and.
It's customized.
They, yeah, they're going to customize it. Oh, do you want the garage down under? Oh, no, I want a side by side garage.
Yeah.
You know, uh, so they would have no way to know.
Hmm. But I do like from the documentation standpoint of having those, if you want to call them building permits, um, in the file with the subdivision. So if there is any question down the road, we've got a file that shows us what, what was done.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think this is where the site plan approval.
Yes, this will tie it in and then we can ask for the documentation.
Get there. That's how you get there.
You can pull that documentation yourself.
Right, I will, I, they, they do come to me, but again, all, the only jurisdiction that I have is that, yes, this subdivision was approved.
But you can print out.
Yes, and I can certainly provide that to you, but what does it do at that point?
Yeah, I can do it. I gotta tell you, I didn't even know that. I didn't even know it was coming, um, to our planners. I, I apologize. I did not know that. So I told, I told the building inspector, I'm like, well, I just wanted something new. It's good to know. Because no, it's, it, this is part of the documentation that would be going to the planners. I said, okay. Didn't, I guess I didn't ask as part of it, so, but anyhow.
So I guess my question, for example, um, would that gentleman Bryce Lemon is like, I don't know where the water's coming out of the hill. Theoretically, you could look at each plot plan and see if there's underground drainage from the house.
If the engineer put it on there.
Yeah. Wouldn't we walk?
That gets back to this document, the site plan committee.
Yeah, please provide.
But the other thing too is, is wouldn't the drainage be eventually accepted? Isn't, isn't the town accepting those easements?
True, yeah. I'm sorry, when I said drainage, I mean like, uh, gutter underground.
They do when they accept the road.
Oh, gutters, that's, that's something, apparently that's not even under the building.
Inspector's.
Inspector's purview, is my understanding.
No, Delia, you're right, because I asked that question. He said, all I care about is the setbacks. And where the house is within the setback and everything else, he said, that stamp on that drawing is the, uh, I'm gonna use, I'll use a gospel of that house design, gutter design, roof design, everything, that individual engineer's call. But he's saying that the setbacks with the houses is where it's supposed to be, and that's what the building inspector checks to make sure it's correct. But outside of that, it's not in the building inspector's responsibility to check on everything else, that's what that stamp's there for.
See, this, this is.
All stuff I learned, I'm, I'm good, great knowledge.
Same, same thing that, that. But we're having a hard time getting, getting through at this point. You know, I, personally, you know, I would have thought that the first thing that a building inspector would do. Once he, when they received a, an application, would be to go out and look at the lot. You can't do it.
Yeah.
He's not even allowed to do that.
Yeah.
His first inspection is the foundation.
Yeah, he's got three, foundation.
Yeah, that's where he starts.
And then rough in, and then final, the other three, if I remember, but I could be wrong.
And, you know, in the, in the same.
So do we need to make a bylaw for him?
I know, he's under Mass General law and a building.
I, I do think that if, when it comes to subdivision, though, this is, I'm thinking where your, where your stormwater management plan would come in place, right?
Yeah.
And if you're, you know, so that should take into account. Individual runoff from, from the lots.
And that goes to the design of any.
I want, I want to get back to my particular point.
Okay.
Okay, where, where, you know, it seemed to me logical, the building inspector would have more control. Well, I think we've got a bunch of people around saying that, oh, the planning board.
Yeah, well.
Has more control than we really have, because we don't have, you know, we don't have any control over the slopes on the individual lots.
That's why we're.
Yeah, I think we.
That's why we exist, this is why.
Yeah, you can't create that.
Maybe, maybe can't, we can't.
No, you, you can, because you, you, it's up to you to create those rules, but I will say currently you do request, there's, you know. Um, to address key specific point about runoff and drainage. In the definitive plan, you ask for stormwater management plan. The planning board asks for it, and you also ask for provisions that sh- that show that water will not be diverted to adjacent properties from that, from the subdivision. So you already asked that, whether it's received or not, I, I, you know, different story, but it's in your rules.
Or your practice will work.
Well.
Well, that's a pure view.
When you, correct, when you receive it, then you go to your peer review.
And, and typically what we've done in the past is stormwater management plan. Has been used as part of the peer review, so when the developer comes in with a plan for the subdivision. That shows the retention ponds, that's helping that water not leave the property, or the storm scepters, that's making sure it doesn't go through. That's where the peer review looks at stormwater management and the plan, and makes sure they do not have any water to this point that's leaving the site.
And I will also point, and I, and I showed this to Norm, that in the subdivision, uh, decision. That the developer knows upfront that if, before the subdivision is complete. And it comes to the planning board's attention, that there needs to be some sort of adjustments to the construction of the streets or the subdivision improvements. Um, the, the, the planning board can request that the, that the developer makes those amendments or those changes. So. That can be done.
So that's in there right now?
Correct.
I won't say it, but that sounds like it could be applicable to some people's properties on Palm Gossett.
Palm Gossett stuff, A and R's, only thing that would be applicable to is on Arrowhead.
So the Arrowhead people would need to complain about it?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw them on the bus, but.
So, so Arrowhead, right, is, is technically an incomplete subdivision.
Correct.
So.
It doesn't come to the town for acceptance.
Correct, so, um, this is why we have hired, we, well, we're discussing hiring some consultants to look into. Hey, did the developer do everything that they were supposed to do? If they did. Well, there you have, you have your answer.
Yeah, well.
There's nothing to worry about.
About before, new subdivisions, how do you know when it's a spring? Who knows, it might pop and step really blowing a thousand gallons a minute.
That's the hydrological that Dilly was talking about, the study.
You don't know where they are.
Well, I mean, if you, if they come across during construction.
During construction is one thing, but you don't know, you're not. When you go to a lot that's an acre or whatever, you know, you don't know what's in the back part of it.
So you mean, so if they start digging after they own it?
Disturbed and then something pops up and starts running like crazy, you know, that's, that's all the nature of it, that's how it happens. Unless you want to go out there with the, the apple stick and try to.
The mining rod?
The mining rod, yeah.
But, but I may add to your point, that's why, um. Arrowhead is basically, can be put into a holding pattern and be modified, because it's not a complete subdivision yet. Road hasn't been accepted, and if there's issues, you can go back to the builder and say, he's been corrected.
But again, that's, that's where the peer review comes in, is they, they double check our homework before we hand it in, I, I know there was an issue with Concom. Where the thing was stamped by an engineer. But it was like an environmental plan, and it was stamped by an engineer, did like HVAC. And so having somebody peer review it, yeah, thankfully the person who caught them was a peer reviewer and did that for a professor as well. But like, these people that we're dealing with want to make money. And we need to make sure that we keep the town's best interest in mind, and sending that through a peer review. It, it helps everybody out, because it double checks our work, catches anything we might have missed, maybe there's a second thought that comes in that somebody's had a discussion about in a different town or what have you. Because they're not just simply peer reviewing stuff for our town, they're doing it all over, and as stuff pops up, it can be applicable here, or new best practices, or what have you, I think it's. I think it could really help us out.
I agree. We're approaching my eight thirty cutoff, so.
I'm sorry, but.
Yeah.
My wife is ticked off, because I said, I'm gonna invoke Maryland, so do these eight o'clock tonight, I was supposed to.
I, I guess, uh, we've covered a lot, um, and before we go, I think we need to set up, uh, next meeting, and it's not next week. I need some.
It won't, because we have a planning board meeting.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, no.
Is, is September third, is that doable? That's Wednesday, after Labor Day.
A week from, two weeks from now?
Two weeks, yeah. I'm looking for.
What should do, Jerry?
Well, before, no, no, not accepted.
You want the date?
I want a date first, if, uh, I'll go around September third, Norm, good, Dick?
Yeah, uh, hopefully I'm in still good health.
Is six thirty good, I'll ask that question too.
I like six thirty.
It's good for me, because I can get back and, and make sure, yeah.
And eat something.
Yeah, yeah, throw down some barbecue quick, man is six.
Yes.
Gee?
I don't mind.
Yep.
Okay, excellent, we're gonna, I'll get that put together.
The third, alright.
The third.
Six thirty.
Six.
Tim, what's our homework that we know in that?
Good question.
Um, I would say the first homework is, is, Dilly had a great point, go grab the subdivision regs. And look at them for the point of where the site plan is called out, and how we can improve upon that. And if you want to, you could.
I mean, we, we actually want to put, find out where it would, it would be appropriate to be inserted.
Inserted.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say where the site plan now, see if that can be improved upon, and if you've got sections out of Paxton. Concord or Worcester that you'd like to put in, come back with those, and we can talk about those.
Like I say, I want sign offs on all documents.
Yeah, I think that's a policy that I think the planning board needs to take care of, not the bylaws.
Let's go start from here and go to there.
Well, I think that, that motion that we're sending up to the planning board sort of covers a lot of that, about. What needs to be signed off, and can expand upon the topic when we get up there.
Because I've already talked to D C R, and they want that desperately.
Okay.
So.
And then I'll wait till we're off, then I just want to give you some, I'm trying like hell to get you that damn stormwater management for Arrowhead.
Oh, I, yeah, when you come across it.
Oh, it, it's there, I'm just trying to get the right person to dig it out.
Hey, I'm not.
I've already talked to Rob, and I forget Rob's last name, he's digging into it, but he thinks it could, he was gonna go in the office, he might think it'd be hard copy that he's gotta find, I said, I don't care, scan and send it to me.
Yeah.
So.
Rob from where?
Uh, Mass, uh, uh, Environmental.
Is that right over the line? Oh, no, D C R.
D C R or Mass Environmental, D P, yeah, D P, I'm sorry.
This is the state you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, the, the state document for Arrowhead that, uh, nobody can seem to find, well, I'm gonna get it one way or another.
That'd be wonderful.
Kevin provided us the whole document, the plan.
So he, he did not, because he, he, no, he did not, he, and he'll tell you, he did not receive a copy of the.
Yep, put it in his email or something.
He said it, yeah, he did not receive it.
He, he gave us something.
He did, but they're not, it's not a storm water management plan, I believe it's just an erosion control. You, you're free to come and check.
Yeah. But I would say, all I'm saying is.
He, he specifically sent an email, he did not get it.
I glance at the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, and those plans, uh, include a thousand foot sway, goes down the side of the area. It was the infiltrator.
Sure.
I wonder if those plans don't reference.
So. I guess we need to come up and see if there's, there's somewhere in there.
Come and check, I, you know, I, I, he said that he did not receive them.
Yep.
So.
And, um, I'm mistaken, that email also said that you, some, either yourself or somebody's requested from Flare Corporation, and they provided nothing.
Correct.
Well, like I said, I'm trying to work an angle for you, that I can get somebody to that document, whatever I can do.
I thought there's maybe a bit of pressure for me.
No, no, okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, yeah. Discussion, vote.
Eight thirty four.
Eight thirty four, thank you, thanks, everybody, appreciate it, thanks.